I'll call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda tonight is considering approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of December 12th, 2016.
What's your approval?
Motion by Councilman Engelberger.
Second.
Second by Kirchma. Comments, discussion, any changes to those minutes? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Council Representative report. Alderman Truel is out this evening. Alderman Jensen.
Thank you. Let's see, on December 27th, council met and let's see, ordinance 26, 2016 was approved. It was an ordinance for keeping of chickens, oh, 2616. Also, R 126, 2016, a resolution for final plat for Kettle Park West was approved, 10-2. Also, R 28, 2016, a resolution, common council, for Kettle Park West Development Phase 2A, it was approved, 10-2. And also, R 29, 2016, a resolution, common council, Stoughton, proving configuration and connection of Oak opening drive to Highway 138. That was tabled and will be discussed at a committee of the whole meeting tomorrow.
Great. Thank you very much. Status of developments. Planning Director Shield.
Contained in your packet is a list of projects that have been before the Planning Commission. One slight alteration, the Lotus Salon is actually open for business. I think it was right after the first of the year they opened up for business in their new location on Nygaard. Other than that, if you've got questions, I'll try to answer them.
All right. Any comments or questions from Commissioners this evening? All right. Agenda item number five. Dennis and Amy Kittleson are requesting project review approval to demolish the building at 315 East Main Street. We'll start with a project overview by Planning Director Shield.
This particular property is within the downtown overlay district, which requires action for site modifications by the Planning Commission. And the request is before you from the Kittlesons related to removal of the building. And it's my understanding they don't have any imminent plans, but they're trying to figure out exactly how they'd like to repurpose the site in the future. That would have to be consistent with the code of ordinances for the zoning district that it's encompassed in.
Thank you. There's been a request by a couple folks here this evening to speak to the Plan Commission. Now, it is the Plan Commission's, like all committees, the Plan Commission's decision if they'd like to allow public comment at this time. It's not listed as a public hearing. So, that's a little different at this point.
No problem.
Commissioners are all as usual? Okay. I'm sorry? Oh, yes. So, let's start with Dennis Kittleson, if you'd like to talk to us about your project a little bit.
Actually, my wife would like to.
Okay. She gave you the look, Dennis.
Yeah, exactly.
That would be good. Thank you.
So, we just want to take down the building and put perhaps a little public park, public...
A private, but yet utilize it as being a public area for people that could either...
Green space and...
Green space, come down for lunch. There isn't a whole lot of areas for that. We have no desire for it to be a parking lot.
No.
But we do definitely want some green space. We thought it would really be of value to the city. You have Rotary Park there, for instance. You have the library. You have fussballs.
Just a place to gather.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And you'll be available for questions, should Commissioners have some?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And again, since it's not a public comment period, we don't have people registered to speak yet, but is there anyone here that would like to make a comment? I know Alderman Mieske indicated he is interested in doing so.
I'm kind of distressed about this request to have a building in the historic district removed. Unfortunately, when we remove a building, we remove it forever and we have no recourse afterwards. I believe this is a relatively significant building in the fact that it is one of the few that is stick-built, not a brick building in the commercial downtown area. Building is significantly older than the majority of the buildings in the city, and it should be preserved. We are a community which prides ourselves on our building stock. And how we preserve it says a lot about us. If we decide to remove this property, I think it will be a step backwards for us. I don't see removing a building because somebody wants to have some green space. We provide a lot of it. At this point in time, I don't, this is a very short-sighted request. There is no plans for it in the future, so why remove a building? A building that does have some architectural significance. And I'd like you to take that into consideration when you do make your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Agenda Item 5?
I just wanted to add something.
You'd like to, yep.
I understand people would really like to see the building stay there.
I'm sorry, Dennis. It's being taped, so we just need you to speak into the mic.
I understand people would like to see the building stay there. But being a business next door to it, I've seen it being vacant for quite a while. And as it sits vacant, it deteriorates. We purchased the building, and we thought we were doing something that would be favorable to the city. I did have somebody that looked at it two years ago, came back to me after he heard that we had purchased it, and he had told me that, "Well, you know, the building could be restored, but it has a price tag of $200,000-plus." So, some of that has to take into consideration. And it was for sale for four years, five years? And we've taken liberties out of our own pocket to actually go ahead and move this forward. We were up at Shaboygan, Blue Harbor, and then we were downtown, and they have a beautiful library there. And also, next to the library, they have a, what was it? Just a larger area of green space there. And it was a wonderful thing. And the place was packed. So, I know that there's been talk, and we feel that by doing this, it is not going to harm the city at all, any which way. There was talk that it was one of the last residential houses. Well, the city bought the house across the street of it a fair, I can't remember how many years ago, and turned that into a parking lot. We don't want it turned into a parking lot. That's not what we have. What we have, the idea, is a green space. And I would have to say that I think the city does have green space, but you don't have green space downtown. So, it would be nice for people to be able to walk up and down Main Street and actually have a place that they could sit and enjoy the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Commissioner Kirchma.
Mr. Kittleson, could you come back up for a question?
Sure.
I just, I understand the green space, but I mean, is that the, that is the future plan, or you're, you would redevelop it at some point in the future?
No, our future plan is for...
To never have it be redeveloped into something. It would always stay, and not necessarily just green space as far as grass, but a place for people to gather. It'll never be a, fill in the blank. It will never be a house, or it won't be a parking lot, or it won't be, I mean...
In our lifetime.
Yeah. We just want, the house has been sitting there for multiple years. It's deteriorating. It's falling down. It's horrible inside. Yeah, it'd be great if someone, you know, had $300,000 to do whatever they needed to do. It's been for sale for a long, long time. Various tenants have been in and out, and nothing has, it's not a nice, it's not a nice-looking area. So, it's just a place for people to come, not just us, for everybody. So, that's all. And not a lot of, like, hardscape necessarily, but, you know, just gardens. And perhaps someone had brought up a great point of maybe having a, I mean, we have a little free library in our yard, and it would be interesting to have one, maybe a prototype of the, our big library. So, a library, a little free library that looks like our big library. Also, someone had an idea of perhaps maybe having, because I like to garden a lot, so maybe having gardening tools there for people, you know, take one, leave one, you know, if you need one, take one, you know, bring it back, or whatever. So, just a community thing that people can enjoy, everybody can enjoy. So, no, no, it wouldn't be developed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Thanks, Mayor. Rodney, just for clarification, as far as the zoning district, green space would be allowed if it's that classification?
Well, we think that it would have to be, it would likely be developed at some point in the future.
Right.
I mean, even if it remains green space for 20 years, it'll likely be developed in something, it has strong potential to be redeveloped in the future. And any redevelopment would be required to meet the zoning district requirements. Anything they do to the site would actually have to come back through the Planning Commission. If they want to put up a building of some sort, or a shed, or a park space, I think that would probably have to come back through the Planning Commission for review.
Okay, sure.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I feel, I guess, in the understanding that, you know, the cost to repair the building at $200,000 or $300,000, and that it's been sitting vacant for so long, but it has so much historical value, I feel like the market has shown that it doesn't have that much value because it's been sitting vacant, and nobody has a plan for it. And so, here we have, you know, this historical building that should be adding to the downtown, but it's falling apart. There's paint peeling on it. It's, it's not very attractive. And so, I feel like we have someone here who wants to take this in a direction and make an improvement. Because how long do we let that building sit there in the heart of our downtown, and nobody's restoring it? I didn't, you know, there obviously hasn't been any effort until this point where someone wants to remove it, that, "Oh, it has so much significant value," but there hasn't been any effort to highlight it. So, in my opinion, I feel like this is taking it for, because for those that feel that it is valuable, there is no direction with that either. And I do think that there is value in green space downtown to add to the betterment and the wellness of, you know, the other businesses. And I think it adds another layer and another dimension of value to the downtown that we don't have. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this, just clearly because, you know, feasible, it's not feasible to invest that much into it and turn it into something. And I feel like the market has said that, you know, this building doesn't have that kind of value to it. So, that's kind of how I'm going to vote tonight.
Thank you. Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you. Dennis, if I could ask you...
I'm sorry, Greg. Greg, if you'd like to speak into the mic a little bit.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Closer. Have you pursued selling it to this? Has anybody approached you and said, "Yes, I'd like to restore this," and have you approved?
Nobody's asked me, and I know people have known that we have purchased it for a while, but nobody's approached, either my wife or I, about buying it to restore it.
And so, all right. So, your end use basically is just for green space for the foreseeable future?
Our end use is green space for the city to have where, like we had discussed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from Commissioners? Michael?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderperson Engelberger.
I would be absolutely opposed to having a building like this demolished. This is a building that's on the National Historic Register. It's on our Main Street, and there's probably the top one or two reasons why people relocate to Stoughton is because of its historic nature. We start demolishing buildings and getting rid of our historic nature downtown, we might as well just become any other town in the USA.
I just want to clarify, I understand that it's within a historic district, but I don't believe it's within the historic, on a register.
It is also under the National Historic Register. It's not a, it's not a local...
It's a local landmark?
No. It's not a local landmark.
Okay.
It's in the district.
It's in the National Register. It is on the National Historic Register.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. All right.
Also, I think it would just be devastating to the city and a travesty to tear down our historic buildings. We've got landmarks, a couple landmarks people that have sent some information to the Commissioners that they believe that this would even be a violation of our ordinances. And I would, at a minimum, like to table this and send it to the Landmarks Commission for review on what it means to our Historic Landmarks Commission.
Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to table and refer it to Landmarks.
Can I ask one question here, though?
I have a quick question. Sure.
Could Rodney, I do believe that all this information had been sent to the state of Wisconsin?
They did review it as part of a demolition. They did review it. The paperwork is in there indicating that they do not have objection to it on the basis of that.
I have a quick question. So, if you say no to this, then it's just going to sit there, you know, unless, I mean, it's just, if we can't take it down and make it a better spot, then it's just going to fall down on its own.
I would say that's an opinion, but...
How can it, I've got, okay, I'm sorry. I don't know. I truly don't know the answer to it.
Well, I guess the answer to that is if that's, you're the owner, and that's your wishes, that's, I guess that's your wishes. But I think that would be a travesty to this historic nature of Stoughton, Wisconsin.
Let's get back to the motion. We have a motion to table and to refer this item to the Landmarks Commission. It does require a second. That motion dies for lack of a second. Further conversation? Alderperson, you've become an older person. Commissioner Kirchma.
Rodney, with that zoning district, if something was rebuilt there, what are, is there, is there, I don't know it good enough, but can you explain what the requirements would be for anything new that got put on there in the future?
The zoning district requirements are pretty stringent about building, building being fronting Main Street or fronting the street, zero setback essentially. So, there's some pretty stringent standards that somebody would have to evaluate closely with any project that would be proposed there.
And that would have, that would have some, they would have to match kind of the historic nature of it, or what is...
We haven't gotten into the detail of what it would require for, there are additional standards.
Standard, yeah, okay, okay.
And no residential on the first floor, correct? It has to be retail, commercial nature?
Yep. It has to match the permitted uses and location.
Right.
And one further question, if I may. When was the last time the building was occupied?
I don't know.
Does anyone know?
I don't want to answer.
I'm going to say probably just by being next door to it, my business, probably five years.
I don't know. I'm sorry. Additional comments or questions from our Plan Commissioners?
I have a question.
Okay, sure. Rodney?
There's been question about compliance with the ordinances. If there is a belief or an uncertainty as to whether this should be, would this action would be consistent with the city ordinances, we've had the city attorney involved in the initial discussion. If the Commission feels that it's more important to hammer that out before a decision is made, that can be done. But he's been involved with the initial evaluation of repurposing the site, what uses may or may not be allowed there. We had a discussion related to that. But if there's a level of uneasiness about it, that's an option.
Okay.
I guess I'd just ask if, in the city attorney's opinion, then, we are not violating...
I can't speak for him. Like I said, we've had him involved in conversations. We've not asked for an official legal opinion, but he's aware of the project, and we've talked through a number of aspects of it. But if the Commission feels that's fully necessary, we can, we can have it in writing.
Sure. I'm going to go with Hannah Jensen, and then Engelberger.
Thanks, Mayor. But still, I would ask, regardless whether we vote on this and say we do approve it, the attorney would review it, whether it's by ordinance or not, correct?
No, the attorney wouldn't, wouldn't review it unless specifically asked to do so.
Request. Thank you.
That would be my request. I would make that motion.
Motion to...
Motion to have the attorney review, and then bring it back to the Commission at next meeting.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Maloney. A discussion on the motion on the floor. Commissioner Kirchma.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to, I tend to agree with the Kittlesons. They bought it, and it's their right to do with it, as long as we're not doing anything against landmarks. And as much as I'd love to see an old building stay, I don't, you know, if it's been vacant for five years. My question for them is if it waited a month, and we got a review from the attorney, is that going to be okay with them?
Fine with me. I don't know. He's been working with the people.
The problem that I run into is the people that are going to take the building down. They would like to do it the end of this month, the first part of February. Their major concern is to make sure when they do do it, that it's after 8:30 in the morning, because they don't want any school kids around while they're doing this. So, we're kind of on a little bit of time restraints there for that. I know that if we get past, like, the middle part of February, I run into an issue where they won't have the time to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got two, two members of the Landmarks Commission that have sent notices to this Plan Commission that feel that this is a violation of the ordinance that's currently in place. Those are the people that wrote that ordinance and brought it forward to the council to adopt. So, I think it's absolutely necessary that they need to review this. Landmarks needs to review it and see if it's a violation of our ordinance. I'm not certain, not real clear on the motion. It sounds to me like it's, is the motion to allow the demolition and then also have it go to the...
The motion at this point, Alderperson Jensen made the motion, second by Commissioner Maloney, to have the city attorney review the request to see if it's in violation of any city ordinance. Is that correct?
So, that's the only motion? There's not a motion to deny it?
No. That's the motion at this time.
To allow the demolition?
No. No, if I may.
No.
Motion is simply to review, have the attorney review the proposal before we make a decision on it, so there will be no denial or no approval until the next meeting, and we have the results of what the attorney, city attorney is proposing, or what the city attorney's findings are.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. A motion by Alderperson Jensen, second by Commissioner Maloney. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries on a four-to-one vote.
So, this will come back to the next Plan Commission meeting?
Yes.
The question I have for that, then, is will we be able to move that up forward? Your local fire department has come in today and asked me if they could use it for valuable training that they really feel they need in this type of, or this type of area, so do we...
It'll come back to the next Planning Commission meeting in February, do you know the date?
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth? February 13th.
Okay.
Agenda item number six. Kevin Yeska, am I saying that right, Kevin?
Yep.
Close enough, anyway. A professional development requests a specific implementation plan amendment, approval for QuickTrip 1359 US Highway 51. Planning Director Shield.
Commissioners will recall that there's already been an SIP, or a specific implementation plan, approved for the QuickTrip site in Kettle Park West. There's three slight modifications they're hoping to make to the site and building plans prior to construction beginning. So, with that, I would request that Kevin give us an overview of those. I'll call him up on the screen. In a second here.
And we do have a public hearing registered or listed for this item, but we'll have the overview first.
Sure. Technology's awesome.
It is, when it works.
Perfect. All right, everyone. Thanks for having us. Kevin Yeska from JSD. Coming here today to show you these three additions that we, these three modifications we made to the QuickTrip site plan. First and foremost, and probably the most important here, is the expansion or addition of 15, approximately 1,500 square feet to the QuickTrip building itself. What you see on the left side of your screen is the previous site plan from July 2014. The trash enclosure was located on the northwest side of the building, and then if you flip over to the right side, it's still located on that northwest side. We're just reorienting it towards the, so the entry doors to the trash enclosure are facing the car wash to the west. And then, the actual building expansion and what QuickTrip has proposed there can be seen in a few additional slides once we get to them. I guess I'll go through these three additions, and then I'll have Troy Molez, oh, gosh, I'm going to butcher this. Troy from QuickTrip.
Yeah, just go Troy when it's hard, yeah.
To run us through some of those interior updates. So, again, 1,500 square foot addition on the backside. We have, actually, in 2014, we had some picnic areas in Number 1 on the left side, and those in the site plan have been eliminated, and Troy has just notified me, we would like to keep those, actually, and we'd actually like to propose those on the very east side of the new site plan where the crosswalk connects into the proposed bike path for the Kettle Park West development, right above the Number 3. Rodney? Yep. So, what we're thinking there, and I apologize, we don't have that, but we previously had two park, two picnic tables. We'd like to split one on the north side of that asphalt walkway and one on the south side, if that can be approved tonight. Jumping into Number 2, the underground fuel storage tanks just became a little bit smaller. One of them had become a little bit smaller. And then, Number 3, due to the building addition, we did have to add one more parking stall to keep within the zoning compliance. And at this time, as we get into building elevations, I'll have Troy step up and walk you through those.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Plan Commission. My name is Troy Molezova.
Oh, no wonder he couldn't say it.
Yeah, it's a doozy, but it's all I got to work with. M-L-E-Z-I-V-A, real estate manager with QuickTrip, 1626 Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin. Thanks for the time this evening. It's hard to believe it's been over, well, a little over two years since the initial building was approved. What we've done, as Kevin mentioned, was our new store has evolved to a little bit bigger of a building. We've rolled out a fresh meat program since then. We've added more floor space to the store, allows us to have more expanded grocery offerings. And also, we've added a family restroom as well, which is a nice feature that we've added that I think will be really well-received by the community. The building itself, you'll see, basically, we just took out the back wall of the building on about three-quarters of the back and pushed that back elevation north in this situation. So, what you see on the left here, the slide, is the old building, which was about 58, 6,000 square feet, 5,800, 6,000 square feet. Now, it's about 7,300 square feet. So, the, as Kevin mentioned, the one benefit of the trash enclosure is that it's better screened. In the previous orientation, it kind of had an angle to it. Now, those gate features will be pointed interior to the site, I guess, to the west in this situation, back towards the interior of the development. So, you won't even see it unless you're going back through the backage road through Walmart. The slide on the right is kind of the new elevation. You'll see the facade that faces towards the fuel canopy on top. The second one down with the Number 2 by it would be the facade that's going to face Highway 51. And if you compare that to the old version, we've added some windows, and with the extra depth, it gives us a little more ability to kind of dress up that side of the building, so I think it looks really nice. So, I think it looks really nice. The third facade that you'd see would be the side that would face, again, west towards the car wash. And now, you'll see that, in that presentation, where the ice coolers would be, ice freezers, ice chest. And then the gate for that trash enclosure would be only visible basically between the car wash and a little bit from the, from the north side of the Walmart parking lot. And then the fourth elevation you'll see on the bottom would be the view you'd have as you'd be traveling south into town on Highway 51. So, we moved that gable element to be over the western, excuse me, eastern end of the, of the building so it's closest to Highway 51. The store itself, again, the latest features we have here are a little more customer friendly. We'd like to incorporate those into the site as we're committed to be here for, for a good long time. So, we'd like to incorporate those changes into the building with your blessing, so. I'd answer any questions you have, but thank you for the time.
Okay, well, why don't we go into a public hearing first and then we'll keep you close by for questions if commissioners should have some. I don't, at this point, have anyone registered to speak at the public hearing. Is there anyone that may have arrived a little late wishing to speak on this agenda item? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to recommendation to count and counsel.
Can we flip on the lights?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. Thank you, Commissioner Kirchmann. Sure, Planning Director Shiel.
We've been working with the city attorney to craft the ordinance properly, and that's not in your packet yet. So, if you make a recommendation to move forward, we'd, we'd request that you'd take action with the consideration the city attorney would be drafting the ordinance for placement on the council agenda. I did, did want to just highlight one area that was mentioned in the presentation. It was mentioned that there is a hope to have a picnic or a hardscape surface area. And I wanted to help understand that more.
Sure.
So, we can see how that would, would work. This is the location of the connection to the, the Ped Bike Trail. Just for folks, this is the Ped Bike Trail along Highway 51. This is their public access to it, a sidewalk area. So, Kevin, if you can describe to us where that's...
Yeah, so on the, with the landscape plan, when you're, when you're actually accessing our site there, you would have two trees on both sides, close up to the crosswalk. And just before those trees, we would propose the picnic, picnic table space, which I believe would be a six by six concrete pad. The tables would be four by four, standard four by four table on both the north and south side of that, that pad.
Right about in there, then?
Yep.
Okay.
And then we just adjust landscaping accordingly to wrap around most likely three sides of that concrete pad. That could be used for staff, visitors, or people coming along the bike trail.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to clarify, our understanding is the request is to modify the site and building plans to accommodate the three identified building, building and site alterations. And then the fourth one to include the two patio locations.
Correct.
Adjacent to the public access.
All right, so let's start our discussion out with, with the motion as, as we typically do.
A motion to approve based on the attorney drafting the ordinance. These plans plus the revisions to the site plan for the, the outdoor seating that's not shown.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Jensen. Okay, Alder, I thought I saw a question. Sure, Commissioner Kirchmann.
Could you go back to the elevations, Rodney?
Certainly.
My question was on the side that's of the dumpster enclosure, as you're coming down north, that has the same facade as the building, or I just wanted to, if they, if you could come back up. So, as you're coming north through town, heading south, the facade is which one? The bottom one? And the dumpster is on the, enclosure is on the right side, correct?
Be on the west side, correct.
On, on, it'd be, it's right, is that it right there, or is it?
Slide over, so you see where the, the pitch of the roof there, there's a shadow line?
Yep.
A dumpster enclosure would actually start just below that shadow line you see, almost like a...
Is that a utility box there? I'm sorry.
That gray box, so just to the right of that utility box would be your trash enclosure wall.
But that wall's actually gonna have the same facade as the building?
Yes.
As it's shown there?
Yes.
So, it's all, the only part of the dumpster enclosure that is gonna look like a dumpster enclosure is the two gates?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. Rodney or Michael, just referring back to the last approval that we, that we had and comparing it to this, have any of the exceptions changed? I know there's, we approved exceptions for landscaping along the foundation sidewalk width. In your eyes, everything is...
It's remaining the same except for these three, or these now four, four building.
Changes and then the picking tables?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. For the comments or questions? Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Rodney or Michael, I just wanted to have you go over the exceptions that they're looking for on these, this plan?
There aren't any new exceptions from the site plan that was approved before. So, do you wanna go over the ones that were previously approved? I think they're in the packet if I remember correctly. Did you include the ordinance in, in the packet, Michael?
Not the ordinance.
Yeah, I think they're just talking about, they can read, Rodney?
I think I can get it.
While he's looking for that, can I, can I amend my motion to include the staff review letter? I don't think I stated that.
Okay, no, certainly.
If Mr. Jensen's okay with that.
This guy, I'm also listed on, on page six of his narrative.
Yeah. Do you wanna read them to him, or do you wanna highlight them, Michael?
Sure.
Yeah, let's see. One of them's for the ten-foot sidewalk requirement along, along the building, along the front. Says it's not realistic for smaller convenience store, rather, this requirement is intended for a larger store. So, that was one. The other one was a street tree requirement, minimum two-inch caliber planted fifty feet on center. And it's not conceivable to have them fifty foot on center for a small lot like that. The other one, let's see, was related to foundation landscaping requirements, requesting that no landscaping be required along the west, south, and east facades. Due to environment and microclimate close to building does not support vitality of foundation plantings due to inundation with salt and excessive reflective heat on the southwest, east, and east aspects of the building, difficulty to maintain the area for snow removal, conflict with delivery routes, and conflict with access and support services. So, it was those three.
The one, the one with the trees out in front, the fifty foot, so are there trees in the, in that area then, or no?
There are trees, they're just not, not completely fifty foot on centers. They're a little bit spaced farther apart. Might have a...
Are they spaced farther apart or closer together?
If I could just touch on that, yeah, the, all of our trees for the landscape plan are fifty feet apart. The, really, the only area we're asking for that exception on is on the east side of the building. There's a bit of a gap along 51. And just from a visibility standpoint, for, you know, marketing of this building, attracting users, we just placed a gap, a gap there so people can more easily see the building as they're traveling along 51. But everything else besides the, you know, the driveway west, we do have a little bit wider driveways. We may be exceeding that fifty foot requirement. But the, the tree placement hasn't changed since 2014.
Just another, one other question.
You can speak, you can speak to a little bit.
Yeah, so that gap on the east side of the building.
This section right here?
Yes. There, we're spanning a distance of approximately a hundred feet. And we're leaving that open just for visibility purposes.
So, it's visibility, visibility purposes so you can see the building?
Right, from 51.
Why, I mean, it doesn't make sense. Why, why would... Okay, I guess... My other question is, so the building went from fifty-seven, sixty-four square feet to seventy-three, seventy-eight? And is there any restrictions with the lot being with that change?
No, it meets the setback requirements of the lot and, and the coverage. The additional stall accommodates the additional square footage of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Otherwise, we do have a motion to approve contingent upon, of course, the city's attorney review of the ordinance and the staff review letter.
And it's recommendation to council.
A recommendation to council, yes, thank you. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven. Mark Seidel of Pinnacle Engineering Group is requesting a site plan approval to construct a commercial building for Aldi's, Aldi Food Mart at 1399 US Highway 51. Planning Director Shiel.
The materials found in your packet and hopefully soon to be on the screen will show the site of the Aldi's location. They're seeking to redevelop the site that was formerly owned by the Kaiser Group. And I hope they have that up momentarily for you. Thank you, Todd.
Yep.
Just a, just a quick overview, and I'm, I'll let Mr. Seidel speak to it as well. But just for orientation of the project, Highway 51 is along the right-hand side of the screen here. Jackson Street, as we know, has already been improved and constructed through and past this location. The Kaiser Building, or the former Kaiser Building, will be removed as part of this project. This is the existing location, existing site plan. And this represents the new or proposed site plan that they're, they're seeking approval from. Holtz Road, this is noted as an ingress-only location to try to minimize traffic that would be coming out onto Holtz Road. They have an exit that comes, this principal exit, or this exit out of the far western part of the site is noted for trucks only. That's intended to allow their large delivery trucks to come in this location and exit here. Or likewise, they could come in and go around the building, but to exit at this location. As you can see, this location, this drive does directly, is directly opposite of Kettle Parkway to the south, where, where that goes into the, the QuickTrip Walmart site area. So, that's the location. There is a median that's constructed here, pedestrian crossing and traffic calming median. This location of this far western driveway does still allow for the truck movement to not be disturbed by the, by the center median here, to allow them to exit out in that manner. Just a quick overview, stormwater management would be along this side. One of the notes that staff had indicated, this is a rural section, but, but the ordinance is still, still require for facilitation of sidewalks and installation of sidewalks. And that would have to be designed and installed in this area to accommodate pedestrian movement there.
Very nice. Thank you.
Mr. Seidel is here, if you wanna...
Okay, Mr. Seidel, did you wanna talk to us a little bit about your, your project and your...
Yes, absolutely. Mark Seidel with Pinnacle Engineering Group, 15850 West Blue Mountain Road in Brookfield. I'm actually gonna turn it over to Tom Howell. He is the director of real estate for the Aldi Oak Creek Division, so he can talk to you more about who Aldi is and the site plan features. And if there is any engineering comments or concerns, I will definitely come back up and answer those at the end. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you guys having us on the agenda for tonight. We had a pleasure working with Rodney and Michael in regards to this project, and it's been a long process. I think Rodney and I met early on in, what was it, 2016 or late 2015 or something like that. But in regards to the project, and like Mark had spoken of, we've taken the feedback and worked with our predevelopments with the city to put together a plan that would work well and complement Kettle Park West to the south. We negotiated for a long period of time with the Kaisers and the Baxter family to end up at the very end of this project to take the entire 3.52 acres and improve that from what its current existing condition is. And we feel like we've brought together a site plan that not only complements a layout and the structure for our building, but also complements the layout and the structure for our future customers and takes into consideration a lot of different comments that were provided to us from city staff review as well. And in regards to the building renderings, I believe that the color renderings are attached. And I can speak on behalf of the different building materials they've provided, the heights of the tower, the reasoning behind our ingress with the truck routes. We can talk about the details and, and the technical details, Mark is here for that information or in regards to landscaping as well. So, in regards to Aldi's in general, I'm not familiar. If, if some of you have shopped Aldi or are familiar with Aldi, but we are a limited assortment grocery store, and we're becoming more of an everyday grocery store. The last project I did was in Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, just north of here. By show of hands, has everybody shopped or been in an Aldi? Yes, no, okay. As a grocer, we've made significant changes. And in regards to our shopping environment and our, and our buildings, this building here proposed right now is, is over nineteen thousand square feet. And if you include the cart corrals, it's nineteen thousand eight hundred sixty-one square feet. And people talk about the cart corrals because that's unique to Aldi. We don't have exterior cart corrals. We have a rental quarter system where you actually get your grocery cart. And it's a social way for customers to kinda interact and exchange grocery carts. And it's created kind of a unique following on social media. On top of that, we have a smaller grocery store in regards to not offering every single product. So, when you go in an Aldi store, you can't buy every single brand of ketchup. You don't have Hunt's, Heinz, the Aldi generic brand, or private label brand. So, we have a very limited variety, but we offer the best product at the best price at the highest quality. So, that's something we take a lot of pride in, and I see that on a day-to-day basis being with the company for over nine years now. In regards to the sales floor, it's just over twelve thousand square feet. That sales floor is gonna be larger than the Sun Prairie location and any Madison location. Our new building, we do have on the interior sales floor, it's all environmentally friendly product, or building materials, all LED lighting for exterior and interior with natural lighting coming in with the windows on the front and the sun shades. If you look at the top elevation there, with the transom windows that run across from the tower element, there are spandrel glass windows that you see in the black. That is to conceal the bathroom area in the front of the store. Above those windows, we do aluminum composite sun shade to complement the architectural features of the tower elements. And the building itself is made of brick, split-faced blocks, sandstone, stone. And there's aluminum composite panels on the tower elements that are bright silver and slate gray. So, the overall building is a very well-built building, and there are no fake panels in regards to Nietzsche Ha, or it's all, it's all brick building around the whole perimeter. In regards to some of the comments from staff, I know that Rodney had brought up in regards to the sidewalk, which is one item that I would like to discuss from the site plan on Holtz Road. That is one item that we know that is an ordinance for us to meet that requirement, to have that sidewalk provided. But on Holtz Road, there is not a curb currently on Holtz Road, it's more of a frontage road. And with the development of the bike path on the north, or on the east side of Holtz Road that runs parallel with Highway 51, we would look to try to do something to complement a safer alternative and maybe connect... a safer alternative and maybe connect our sidewalk to the bike path, maybe at the radius of following Jackson, just to provide a better safe route and to have that blockage with the curb in case a car were to go over the curb line there. So we would be able to work with staff possibly, if we could get that approved, to maybe look at as an alternate option. Because if we did provide a sidewalk to go north and south along Holtz Road, it wouldn't lead to anything to the north, and it would be a sidewalk that would be on a private piece of our property. And like I said, it wouldn't have anything to block vehicles from driving up over onto that edge of the road from Holtz Road. So that's one thing that we would like to possibly discuss in detail or have an open discussion about. And then in regards to the dumpster enclosure as well, if you could look at our site plan, and I don't know if Rodney, you're able to point out with, or actually, if you go to the elevation, we can see it from there as well.
The dumpster site plan, or site locations here?
Yes. So our dumpster would be located in a recessed dock that's about three and a half feet down from the finished grade?
Correct.
And in regards to our dumpster enclosure, we also have a retaining wall that would run adjacent to it. Let's see here. Be your top elevation again, you can see the truck dock, and then there's the dumpster enclosure just to the left of the dock there, and you can see the finished grade. So our dumpster enclosure sits down, and there's a retaining wall to the west of it, and we provided an extensive landscaping plan that actually shields that whole area as well. So the only visibility we would have to this truck dock would be the truck drivers that would back in, and then customers that would see the actual dumpster itself. That's one item we would like to discuss, to see if we were able to get that approved to just provide a gated dumpster enclosure without providing masonry around the whole perimeter, because in that recessed dock and other projects that we've had in the past, they don't, they really don't last with the amount of salt and sand that gets pushed down, especially with the grade there and with our dock pit being in that location. And Mark can speak on behalf of that as well, that usually that doesn't last more than five years for our purposes with just normal wear and tear and erosion. And I provided a picture there from our last concept that we just did in Portage, Wisconsin. You can see the dumpster doesn't go over the height of the retaining wall. We've did a similar concept where we provided evergreens on that portion of the elevation to grow and shield that area, and we're open to feedback to change the type of plantings in that area to avoid a dumpster enclosure, because we just don't feel that it is something that would be very visible to the public for people to see.
Okay, thank you. And as the last one, let's start with the motion, and then we'll open up for discussion. If commissioners are comfortable making a motion at this time?
We'll approve.
All right. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
With Kirchma to approve the site plan.
There's a resolution. There's an approval resolution.
Okay, I don't know the resolution number. I should know that. I didn't write it down.
Power 1217.
Thank you. And it's interesting, the very first one of 2017, so that's a good way to start. Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think just a few things. I think the idea with the sidewalk crossing, or doing some sort of crossing across Holtz Road, connecting up to the bike path, seems to be a little bit more logical than running a sidewalk to nowhere and creating a more safe. Is it, if I'm understanding it right?
Yeah, I don't think there is a, there is no bike path on.
Doesn't extend north of Jackson?
No, there's no bike path on the north side of Jackson. The bike path is along 51 south of Jackson Street.
Okay, and north of this property is then Dane County?
Dane County Auto, and then Stark.
Stark Garden Center?
Garden Center, correct.
So right now, I mean, that sidewalk would essentially connect up to the driveway and then terminate pretty much right at the entry, the north entry, right?
Well, right now, there's no sidewalk that's planned or shown on this plan to get it to this property line.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, if they were to have one, essentially just run right up to there. And then my other question would be the remnant property. I remember when, way back, probably what, two years ago, we were talking about the whole plat of Kettle Park West, and this site was cut through with Jackson Street. And it was a question, it says in here that there's interest in doing a development sign. So I guess, is there a plan or a direction for that? Is it currently still asphalted, or?
Still asphalted. Maybe Aldi's can.
Right, but yeah, so even with the current status of what's going on out there, that's remained asphalt. I guess if Aldi could speak to that, I mean, with that being a part of the lot, if the asphalt would at least be removed and turned into green space as part of the project?
So in regards to the, I believe it's only about a half an acre in total, the Baxter family wants to keep that portion of the property. We're only looking to purchase the 3.52 acres. So everything that'd be south of Jackson, the Baxter family would like to hold. The future use for that, I think, is still an item that they are currently negotiating. I don't think there is a resolution for that at this time.
Okay.
But I know that's something that they strongly want to hold.
Okay. May I continue?
Sure.
So Rodney, do we, is there, with that being the case, would there have to be a survey split as far as the property goes?
It was done by, I don't know the answer to that for sure. We'd have to evaluate that. Because it is, right now, it is considered part of this parcel, even though Jackson Street dissects it. I don't know the answer to that.
So at this point, that would still be asphalt? With, you guys would develop it, and it would just be asphalt?
We would improve the larger section of asphalt to the north.
Right.
We can follow up with that separately with the Baxter family as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think ideally, you know, with this lot being improved, it'd be nice to have that, at the least, turned into green space.
Yeah.
You know, and just, it's kind of a entry gateway, and I know the intention, I mean, if we could figure out what the intention is, if it is to turn it into an agreement with KPW and do a joint sign. I don't know, Dennis, you have anything that you could add to it at this point, or maybe not? But I think it'd be nice to have a direction of what that remnant is, as it is kind of a key piece that would look, you know, although you have all these finished lots, and that's this little remnant, so.
I have no issue with asking if he wants to sell to me again. And I'll put in our bid to demo and make it green space if I can. We have no issue doing that. But for us to get where we're at here today, we're very proud to be where we're at at this very moment.
Yeah, I think the plan looks great. It'd be nice to have some direction. If you guys, and if you guys are willing to take that on, thank you. I think that would be a great improvement.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirchma?
If that's not part of the lot, how, don't we have to have a site plan, I mean, or?
Right now, it's part of the same parcel. So it really is part of the same lot, and they don't have any improvement or modification plans for that area right now.
But if they're only buying the portion that's going on, isn't there going to have to be the survey delineation?
We're going to have to confirm how that's done.
So can we approve this without that delineation, or not?
I think you can. We can verify, because it was done through a meets and bounds transaction when the right-of-way was acquired through there. So I don't know exactly if there needs to be anything additional.
Okay.
Not to act as a surveyor here, but when a normal right-of-way does go through, it acts as a divider of the parcel. With us having the meets and bounds done, it legally gives us that right to that parcel. When with the roadway going through, that would also have its own parcel, I believe. From a CSM standpoint, I have been instructed that we don't necessarily need a CSM for it because of the roadway going through and the separation with the meets and bounds. But like I said, that's our two cents in surveying.
Commissioner Maloney?
I concur. If there's a dedicated right-of-way for Jackson Street there, there's another parcel.
Right.
The other question I have is related to, is it Holtz Road? Is that long-term planning going to be there, Rodney, is there?
There isn't any immediate plan to locate it.
Is it shared with the township, or properties in the township?
It's in the city limits.
Okay.
But it's also shared with Stoughton Garden, which isn't?
There's one town property that uses this access for service, the Garden Center.
Is there a potential to put curb and gutter in as part of this project? At least to the west half of the road?
Certainly think there could be. There's an open ditch there that would have to be modified to accommodate stormwater, you know, stormwater, but there might be certainly an opportunity to do that.
Rodney, if I can interject there real quick, if you don't mind? We have looked at possibly doing more work to Holtz Road. Unfortunately, the right-of-way for Holtz Road is very small. And as Tom said, the West dot FDM states that you need at least six-foot clearance between the back of curb and a sidewalk for pedestrian safety. And the fact of the matter is, with the right-of-way for Holtz as it is, that won't fit a sidewalk, even if we would put a curb in, unfortunately. And to kind of complicate things more, like you said, there's that ditch right on the other side of the property line. So we can't stick it on our side of the property line, because now you're messing with the drainage patterns, not only on our property, but to the north end as well. And also, to be noted, the DOT has marked a 30-foot section on our property for future expansion. So it would be at our own risk, or whoever's own risk, if you would put sidewalk, a structure, anything in that 30-foot setback, it'd be at our own risk of not it being approved at all, or if it was approved, then we'd have to rip it out in the future. So that's why the whole sidewalk idea, we love the idea of making a connection someplace into Jackson, but putting it on our property right next to the wet pond and being in a DOT easement, or setback, I should say, and with the restrictions of the right-of-way at Holtz, it's, we're really in a bind to make it work. And that's why we're trying to find the best solution to not only make it safe, but also, you know, compatible with the site. Yeah.
Sure. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you. The six-foot setback you're talking about, what's that related to the highway speed, or?
It's a relation of two things. So it's the width of the right-of-way, if it's like a four-lane or two-lane, and then also the design speed of the road. And that will tell you what's the difference you need from back of curb to the sidewalk. It's called your terrace zone, your terrace assistance.
For the design speed at 25 miles an hour for Holtz Road?
I believe, I just checked the other week, and I believe their minimum from 30 miles per hour or under, it has to be six feet. And that's off of back of curb, and that's stating.
I don't think that's.
I don't think that's correct?
Kind of debated.
Okay.
It's two feet.
It's a two feet if you have a bike lane, I believe, so. Isn't it? I could be wrong.
Thank you. For the comments or questions. All right, Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Is it any exceptions listed here? Rodney?
There's two that they verbally asked about tonight.
But nothing that was in the packet?
I'm sorry?
Nothing that was in the packet, all right.
The one was related to this, the sidewalk here, and the other was related to the dumpster enclosure and the loading well of the building.
So is all of this, this is all city property?
Correct.
None of it is township?
Correct.
And Holtz Road is all in the city?
Fronting this property, yes.
How far, how far north of this property does it go before it gets to township?
Just the very end, the very bulb of the cul-de-sac, where it meets with Stoughton Garden Center.
Okay. At one time, we saw a plan that showed Holtz Road coming farther west to get onto Jackson rather than entering onto Jackson where it does now. Whatever happened with that plan?
That was one of the considerations when the intersection was being designed out here. And the truck turning movement was accommodated in the design of Jackson Street-Holtz Road as part of the Kettle Park West project. So that went away. That reconfiguration is not part of this plan.
Yeah, that's a horrible intersection there. So I don't know. It's not very good.
Well, certainly one of the reasons we talked about this when we were looking at this as a split, when there was a consideration of a CSM here, and making this be an entrance only to not allow traffic to come out to this point from this drive location.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Thank you. Mr. Seidel, could you speak to any signage that would be delineating that as the entry only?
On our site plan, we do actually have at every entrance, there's going to be, if you can go to it real quick. We've denoted that there will be appropriate signage with a stop bar, not only at the intersection of Jackson, but then also to the north one on Holtz. So they're definitely.
Not the right of way, you got?
The site plan will work. Perfect. So at the north entrance, or I'm sorry, the entrance only on the north side connecting to Holtz right there, there will be signage right there. And then also down the south side, the four-way intersection with Jackson, there's signage. And then also for the truck only, there is signage right there.
All right, Commissioner Kirchma?
Regarding the dumpster enclosure, it would really just, you would, it's down in the well, but is it viewable from driving in and from Jackson Street?
Here's the picture that they've supplied to give you.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm just.
This picture doesn't give it justice, because this is me on the rooftop looking down. So if you go back to the elevation, sorry to make you go back and forth, right, at the very top of the elevation, the very first rendering, on the far left there, you can see the line of sight. So if your car was there at the top of the concrete half of the truck dock slab, you would have the visibility of the dumpster. But we already have in our plans to do a gate in front of the dumpster, so it would not be visible to anybody in the public going by our dumpster area, or by the truck dock.
So all you're proposing is just to have the gate, but not have the other sides of the dumpster enclosure?
Correct, because it's already in a recessed dock that's down. And that is the exact design that we, from Portage, what we would have here, proposed here in Stoughton with the dumpster, would be locating the exact same location, exact same size dumpster, with the refuse picked up once a week. And we're just going off past experience of our 69 other stores and.
So I currently have a motion by Jensen, second by Kirchma, to approve Resolution 1 of 2017. We're talking about two exceptions, though, that aren't yet on that resolution, that you could still move forward and have those exceptions added to the resolution if the motioners are comfortable with that, or make a change. Aldi person Jensen?
You're asking if we're comfortable with the?
Those two exceptions as?
Exceptions, yes.
Okay, and your secondary was Commissioner Kirchma?
Yeah, so no sidewalk on the Holtz Road, and then just the gate only for the dumpster enclosure facing out to the street.
So we'll get those added to this resolution as it moves forward if the vote tonight allows that to move on to council? With no further discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Okay, agenda item number eight. We have a request to approve a certified survey map to split the property at 1600 Williams Drive. Planning Director Shill?
This creates the parcel in which North American Fur would be locating on our first transaction related to the expansion of Business Park North. It's really been created on behalf of the city of Stoughton for this property.
What this does, just to give people a little summary in relationship to the site, Williams Drive is along the west side of the page, or left side of the page. Future right-of-way is being preserved in this area along the northern part of the property to extend the new street that's been discussed. In addition, there's additional right-of-way that's being dedicated along Williams Drive to allow for the shared-use path to be expanded on the east side of Williams Drive as this area develops going to the north.
Thank you. So we're looking for a motion, a motion to recommend to council approval of the CSM for this property split.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Kirchma. Comments or discussion? Commissioner Kirchma?
Does the easement to the west along Williams Drive now accommodate the stormwater? Has that been worked out with them? And since that, was that the last meeting?
Yeah. Thank you for highlighting that. Couple of things have changed on the site itself to accommodate, there's a larger dimensioned stormwater easement along, if you will, the southwestern property. There's a 55-foot drainage easement here, and then the drainage can be accommodated in the easement along Williams Drive as well. The Outlet 1 will be a regional detention pond that will be servicing more than just this site, but this region.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Comprehensive plan rewrites, and we'll begin with Planning Director Shiel.
Lot of materials in the pack, or on the website to begin to look through or continue to look through. Certainly here to try to talk through anything people would like to. We have a public comment period tonight. We have the open house that is scheduled for the 19th of this month. Still hoping and requesting people to participate in that as well. But if you have specific comments, questions, issues, we'd appreciate hearing about them. You don't have to delay that inquiry with us. There is an area, if you recall, you've got an email that was forwarded from a property owner just on the edge of the planned boundaries, and I'll call up that map. Maps 6, A, B, and C really are representative of the same map, they're just different scales, and include different areas in more detail. For commissioners, the request that we have is from a property that's located along the western. This is Rutlanddon Town Line Road, in essence, this black line here. The property owner that owns the land essentially right in this general area would like to see their property included in the comprehensive plan as mixed-use or even future residential. You've seen their correspondence wishing that to be added to the comprehensive plan. My conversation with them was to indicate, you know, the commission had a discussion about this area, the addition of this at their last meeting. I don't recall that there was any specific discussion for or against adding this area. But I think we've been somewhat judicious in the areas that we add to the comprehensive plan. And I explained that to this gentleman on the phone to indicate, you know, we're not just trying to identify every parcel of land in the area, but what is reasonable that we may grow to in the next 20 years, plus depending on a property owner's willingness to develop or the likelihood of those areas developing. However, there were a couple of points that the gentleman made in his letter and correspondence that I think are worthy of discussion. There's some protected areas just to the north of their property, and while it's not adjacent to their property, this land here is more protected with other environmental corridor features as well. So somewhat in relationship to that dialogue, there might be a discussion as to whether their property and the adjacent properties were included in our visionary document for the future. So if there's any commissioners that have opinions or thoughts about that, certainly let us know, either now or as part of the discussion going forward.
Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would be willing to go along with that, to include that in, including not only the strip going up through there, but the adjacent lands right there where you're pointing.
This whole block essentially here?
Yep. I would be willing to go along with that.
No, that we need official votes? Is there head nodding or agreement or discussion from others?
Consensus to include that in the future plan? Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'm still debating on what classification I would put on that. I don't, Stirling Burger, if you have any thought of what you would, purple or yellow would make sense, but which one? I guess I don't really know what I would do with that.
Can you distinguish between the two again, Rodney?
The planned mixed-use has a number of uses that allow, well, in essence-
That's the purple you're talking about?
Yeah. So when we compare the pies, if you will, these are the pies that the planned mixed-use offers. Planned business, institutional, recreational, multifamily residential, planned office, or planned industrial. Whereas the planned neighborhood tries to have a mix that includes more residential, a single-family, one- and two-family, multifamily, institutional, neighborhood office, neighborhood business, and recreation or public open space. So that's, whether it's more residential in nature is really the intended difference. Matt's gonna-
Sure, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, can you slide back over, Rodney, quick? Thank you. I think I would probably carry the residential up and have the residential, you know, kind of be a transition from the multi-use, but then also adjacent to the protected lands.
Yep.
I think that would, I mean, just from knowing the area a little bit, that'd be a nice neighborhood setting through there. I would say carry that up through north of Rutlanddon, the yellow.
Am I outlining it properly as people envision this tract of land?
Thank you. Other thoughts? Okay. Commissioner Maloney?
You talked about carrying the 140 north of County Highway B at prior meeting. Is that-
In this area? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Across this entire stretch here? What land use do commissioners think would be appropriate to include along that tract of land?
Just about all residential below there, south of there, right?
Yep. So a planned neighborhood type?
Probably makes sense, I would say.
I think that would fit, because, I mean, the planned neighborhood has institutional in it as well, right?
Yes.
Sure.
I thought we talked about last time not to do anything with that, because we don't want to rock the boat too much.
There was certainly some discussion about whether that would create animosity.
It was certainly discussed. You're right.
Which one was that?
The one north of B.
This area here. Just that the community's, you know, there, so many locations. Seems I have to leave it out. We can certainly include it in the draft if you'd like us to. I mean, it'll go to a public hearing document. It's up to the group here as to whether you want it included or not at this stage.
I would like to see it included.
I think I would tend to agree as, you know, if we look in comparison, I mean, all the areas to the east that we have planned, I mean, that seems maybe even further than 20 years out if we're looking at a 20-year plan, where it almost seems more logical that in 20 years, something that is, you know, just north of B would be potentially a little more realistic. And if we're planning so far out on that east side, that, you know, I mean, this is adjacent, services I think would be capable, and we already have a limited service going up to that area. I think it's just the boundary agreement, but I don't think it's, I mean, you guys would know probably more so, but, I mean, to me, I don't think it's like a big secret that, you know, if we could, we would, you know, potentially go that route. So to me, I guess, I don't know why to hide it, that, you know, that's the intention. Whether we do it or whether they do it, planned neighborhood seems to make sense. So.
We can certainly do that.
We will include that in the draft. Just to highlight some of the things that we've been doing at the staff level, Michael's gone through iterations of the voluminous document to try to clarify some language points and irregular references and things like that. So there's been a number of narrative clarifications and changes that are included in the draft document. In addition to that, on the planned land use map, we've been trying to reconcile the planned land use with existing uses. One of them that was talked about the last planning commission meeting was specifically the two flats. All the two flats in our community that are actually zoned, single-family, appeared on our land use map as two-family uses. Well, in reality, most, many of those have been converted to single-family, and they're zoned for single-family. So even if they would discontinue the two-family or the two-flat use, they couldn't reestablish a two-family use without a rezoning. So we've tried to clean that up so that the map reflects the single-family nature of those properties. And Michael certainly can speak to more specifics, but really just trying to clarify the land uses that are in place now to match the future land use in many cases. This gets down to the very parcel level, so it's very detailed to look at.
Very detailed. He's drinking lots of coffee these days. Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, thanks, Rodney, or Mayor. If you could zoom in just to the rail corridor?
Sure.
I like the change to the mixed-use. Just wondering if they did anything along, like the Academy Street area?
There hasn't been any change, just to give people a framework, here is Public Works Facility, Milfab site. So this is the area that you've mentioned. There has not been, on this draft map, any changes to the additional areas between Main Street and that location. There certainly can be, but there hasn't been at this point. I don't think we were provided explicit direction to do so. I think there was some discussion about it. Certainly can.
I think there was discussion about the rail corridor, along the railway, maybe switching that zoning, but the neighborhood- I think, I mean, right now it is just strictly single-family for the most part, right? There's the institutional parking lot, and then the fire department, right?
Yeah.
And City Hall.
I'm trying to zoom in a little bit more here, just one second.
Elvenstead is down in that corridor, residential, single-family homes.
I think this matches the same type of land use as this. So while this is principally on this, principally Stoughton Trailers property, and a lot of it has trailer storage at this point, but is part of the redevelopment corridor. And along the rail corridor does indicate a similar future land use as what we've identified for the Milfab area.
All right. Commissioner Hannah? Oh, I'm sorry. And then Kirchma?
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Would it be, I guess I'd be open to hearing your guys' thoughts on that. I mean, I think that neighborhood has a unique placement with future things, and of classifying that as, I forget the exact classification, but the residential pie chart, and not strictly single-family residents, so that that neighborhood could potentially-
These homes in this area, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah. Yep. If that could go to the yellow with the dots.
Planned mixed, or planned neighborhood. I'd like to explore that a little more. One of the, generally your planned neighborhoods are areas of anticipated future or an undeveloped area already. So, but that is a good comment. We'll flush that out a little more.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirchma?
Yeah, the railroad corridor, that's changed from the first time we saw it, right? Because that was, I think, it was the black, right, before?
This area here?
No, the one, that one right there. Or it was industri, yeah. So that's changed now, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, Rodney, I think you understand my intent with that neighborhood area. It's just not have that locked in as a single-family always, that if, say, four lots were acquired, they could be combined and turned into something other than that.
Right. Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to see it mixed-use through that whole area, purple.
In this area?
That'd be my preference. I guess I also wanted to ask, when we're having the meetings, the public hearing, or the public meetings with this, I think the 19th is the next one?
Yep.
It'd be nice if we could see what is currently there, not just, you know, what is currently there and what we're kind of proposing.
So have an existing land use map and another one exhibit next to it so you can compare?
Because, you know, I'm not sure how we're doing it so far, but it seems like we're updating things, and then here's the newest update, and then the next time it's the newest update. It'd be nice to just go back to see what we have, what is current and what is proposed, rather than keep updating and then we don't even know what it was before. You understand what I'm saying?
Excellent point, yeah.
Good idea. Any additional comments? Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, Rodney, if you could just, on the map, slide over to the pie charts just to see the breakdowns again?
I'll work on it. Doesn't like me doing that, but we're getting it. There, it's catching up. There you go.
Can I ask a question? The difference between neighborhood office and neighborhood business, those two compared to planned business, what is the difference between those? I see essentially, I guess essentially between the planned mixed-use and the difference between the planned neighborhood is that the planned mixed-use doesn't allow for a single-family or one- or two-family home. But essentially, the planned neighborhood allows for very other similar commercial uses in the planned neighborhood. But it would be, if we put it- But it would be, if we put it planned mixed use, it'd be limited to no longer having any single-family residential.
It's principally the case, generally, your planned office and your planned business areas are generally a larger footprint.
Parcel.
A larger site than some of your neighborhood scale properties.
Neighborhood business could be out of a residential home rezoned, essentially, right? Or something like that?
Very similar, yeah. So you may have, it may take more properties to establish, to create a large enough site for a planned business in a mixed use pie as opposed to in one of these pies. So that would be one consideration. But either way, I hear that there's some movement to try to change or consider changing the map for that area into one of these planned districts to allow for more change.
Yeah, I would agree. I would think it would show some visioning maybe towards what that could be. And I think that is one of the areas that has existing use that, but has maybe a different vision than some of the other neighborhoods, you know, that are established.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirchma.
One question I had, on single-family residential, is there any limit on if there was a neighborhood that wanted to be executive-type homes? Is there a limit to the size of the lot, of those?
That's really a zoning consideration, but I don't believe that there is a zoning maximum for the SR6, for example, or SR4. One of the things that would come into consideration is if it's a new development, the density that would be prescribed as part of Urban Service Area Amendment would likely have to offset that with an increased density of multifamily within that development.
With, okay.
To still be able to meet your overall density of units per acre.
So this part of it has nothing to do with that, is what I guess what I'm asking? Because I could see that being restrictive to having that type of a development, which I think we need.
I don't think what we're doing limits it from that being a possibility.
Okay, okay.
But those strict criteria are laid out in the zoning code.
Okay.
The zoning code's really an implementation tool.
Of this, okay.
To help put the plan in place, one of a few, but that's the principal tool.
Okay.
From what the plan. Have any, has anyone reviewed any aspects of the plan or any of the maps that they would like to have discussed or the draft document to talk about and think through out loud at this point? We've had some feedback on bike paths and transportation plans, and I know that the Parks and Rec Committee is also working to provide input into that process here. I think our transportation plan has a number of, a number of aspects already incorporated, but certainly looking for that type of feedback from others. So if we look at the planned transportation map. So you can see a number of existing and planned pedestrian and vehicular routes contained on this map here. And certainly, the other committee input will factor into the discussion going forward at adoption.
Sure. Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Rodney, I just wanted to ask you if, I'm sure you're aware the Parks and Rec and Rivers and Trails Task Force is in the process of updating their bike path and bike lane map and with the hope to include it into the comprehensive plan. Have you had any dealings with them at all? Or have they asked questions of, you know, where we're at and how we can implement that?
My conversations have been through Tom Lynch, who is working with both of those groups. And I think many of our initial conversations have been incorporated into the draft plans here, but I know those committees are still deliberating on it. And as that gets, becomes avail, I think they're nearing completion is my understanding. So as that becomes finalized or as a recommendation comes out of that, we'd incorporate that into this document.
Okay, and we probably, you know, we probably need to coordinate, I guess, you know, locations into, like, for instance, getting into Kettle Park at certain points, you know, like at Jackson Street or, I think there needs to be someplace, a place south of 138 for, you know, for in the future when we get more development over in that area, over where utilities own some land currently, into Kettle Park to the north, you know? Because there's all kinds of bike paths in there, and we just hopefully can pick some of those places out and coordinate them on this comprehensive plan.
Yeah, maybe I can just emphasize, even if there's something specific, a sidewalk or a trail section that's not on this plan, that doesn't mean those shouldn't be incorporated into the construction documents. For example, the DOT is working with the city on their vision for the roundabouts at 138 and 51 and also at Hole Avenue. And those draft plans, and I sent those out today to all the council members, because I just got them today. But it does show how they plan to accommodate bike and pedestrian along and across at those locations. So even if it's not depicted explicitly on here, we'd certainly, the narrative indicates a goal to strive for that as part of any development consideration.
Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. I think probably one street that I know Alderman Truel and I had discussions on was Jackson Street. And having a plan for that, and looking at the map, it doesn't look like that is highlighted. And really, Jackson from Page Street to 51, how with, you know, even more added business to the west side that downtown neighborhood there, that north downtown neighborhood, I think that might turn into more of a collector street or have some sort of designation or bike path or bike lane, something with Jackson Street as I, I think it is, it's used to get to, you know, it's like the Stone Center or even 251 sometimes, or to Pick and Save as another secondary route off of Main Street. So maybe have them look at that, or you guys work on that and see what could be done.
One of the conversations I've had with Tom Lynch is designation of routes can maybe accomplish some of the goals of getting people on a preferred pattern of travel, not necessarily a striped lane or a dedicated area, but trying to, you know, Jackson Street's probably a much more suitable location than Main Street, for example, for bicycle traffic. So giving them some preference to that street would be in order. But also, I suggested to him to consider the origin and destination of possible, you know, facilities.
Right.
Maybe there becomes names associated with a route.
Sure.
You know, a particular loop or, you know, whatever corridor or route it might be. If somebody's trying to follow a route, it seems like they'd want to understand what the route name is instead of.
Where's the endpoint?
Having all sorts of different marked routes that aren't systematically in place. So I think they're discussing that as well at the same time.
I got a question.
Sure, Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, I guess the question would be for Rodney and Michael. I mean, as you guys are dissecting this, and Michael, you're dissecting this, if something doesn't seem clear, and I would say feel free to point something out to us through email or whatever to, you know, review this. If it is a gray area, as I think, you know, you're spending more time or getting more eyes on these documents, and have had probably further, more pointed discussions with, you know, the planners about certain areas, and if there are those areas, feel free to reach out and send it over as far as, you know, looking for interpretation or, you know, how do you want to handle this or whatever. Be more than happy to look at things.
That's a good comment. I think Alderman Engelberger's suggestion, we didn't discuss the approach for the open house as to what was going to be on exhibit, but certainly an existing land use map, not existing, but the current future land use map and what's proposed in the draft documents, I think is a great one. So we'll have those on hand at the open house as well. The commissioners are going to be requested to hold a meeting following the open house, probably in February, late February, potentially the 23rd, to talk about a recommendation on a document. So I don't know if we're in a position to establish a date on that at this point, or if you want to. Certainly, it's to try to bring together the public input from the process and what you've done to date in the open house. But at some point, there will ultimately be a recommendation to the council. Council will hold a public hearing on the document, then consider it for adoption.
Matt's got a question.
Yeah, sure, Commissioner Hannah?
Thank you. I'd say that's a great idea by Alderperson Engelberger as far as have the comparison, but, you know, graphically, almost like we saw in the QuickTrip, if there was even one that highlighted changes, you know, because that document, I know that document has a lot of information on it, and we've got those comments from citizens about this is just so much information that if there is a way to highlight certain areas that are maybe of focus that have changed or that we have updated, so that they're not left standing there, trying to even interpret even more, like, what am I looking at? And then what's the difference between, you know, this little parcel and that little parcel? And so that there might be even another graphic that has, I don't know how you find another color.
It's going to be difficult to highlight them.
You know, right, because there's a lot on there. But even having numbers with a note section on the side of what is the update, you know, or discussion, or, I mean, whatever you want to include in those notes, as little or as much, but even just a numbered system that they can reference then, a page to read, that adding another color or adding another, you know, line or hatch or whatever it is might just throw even more complication, another layer on it, but, you know.
Okay.
Circle could be, could be a way to highlight those areas.
All right, thank you.
Good idea. Any other ideas for our open house coming up on the 19th? We'll see you all there.
Anything else we need to focus on, Michael?
I think so.
All right, sounds great. That leaves, well, the open house discussion, we've already been talking about that. Future agenda items? I think the building on the corner, 315 East Main, is that the right address?
Casey's General Store.
Casey's General Store is proposing to locate on the corner of County Trunk Highway and 51. And we've got draft documents from them at this point.
The Kittleson proposal, most likely, will be back. Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess regarding the RFPs for Milfab, my question would be how much involvement? And how does that decision process happen? And I guess from a citizen's standpoint, when is information released and how is that process happening?
The RDA is, the Redevelopment Authority is meeting Wednesday evening, and those are always open meetings. They're reviewing, there were three proposals. Only one proposal dealt with the entire area. So they're discussing the proposals that were received, what they liked, what they didn't like, those types of things. In, I believe it's March or April, they'll be holding a charrette, the RDA will, so that the developer of the one that they choose will be there, and the community is not only invited but encouraged to please come and attend and talk to the developer as well as the RDA of what you'd like to see in that area. What are the things you like, what are the things you don't like? So that'll be coming up in March.
Thank you.
As of the 29th of December, the city owns the Milfab property. So that's a big step, big step. Alderperson Engelberger?
Can I make a comment on something earlier in the meeting? It's, and it's future agenda item regarding the Kittleson property on the corner of Fourth and Main. You know, there was a comment made that they would just let it deteriorate into the ground. And, I mean, that, right there is a violation of our ordinances. We don't allow people to not maintain their homes and those types of things. So I just wanted to bring that, make a point that, you know, that isn't something that we would even allow under our ordinances. What they were advocating was violating our ordinances. So I think that's a problem.
I think it was a statement made in frustration, but here and there, you're right. Other future agenda items? All right, there's one motion left.
Second.
Motion by Jensen, second by Hannah. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.